Would like to call to order the April 15th, 2019 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. Welcome everyone. We've got almost a full house tonight. First, we would like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're very happy to have with us tonight Reverend Delton Cooper Senior from the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department, or he is one of our chaplains at the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department for our invocation. Welcome. We appreciate you being with us tonight. He and I talked earlier, we're both experiencing vision problems from pollen and allergies, so I'm glad you came out anyway.
So fortunately I had to reread it three times. Our invocation begins. "O Lord, our hearts so filled with joy as we come again into this quiet sanctuary where Thy people meet. Thou just now shed abroad our hearts Thy boundless love, and may we radiate toward those about us with great blessing which we feel today. Lift us above the everyday sins and soreness of this life, that our feet may be planted firmly on the rock of ages. We await the infilling of Thy Spirit. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen."
Amen. Thank you.
Have a blessed meeting. I gotta go to my office because they're yelling at me on the phone.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you being with us tonight. We're also happy to have with us tonight Thomas Walter from our Youth Commission at the front. Welcome. We would also like to welcome Troop 91 from St. James Lutheran Church. I think they're working on some merit badges here tonight, so we're glad to have you with us as well. First up is Approval or Correction of the Minutes, and you all have a copy of those before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to Approval of the Agenda, which you also have before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting agenda, including the changes on page 58?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes as well. And we move to Recognitions and Presentations. And we are happy to have with us tonight Jacqueline Gaffara, which I always struggle pronouncing your name. You'd think I'd know by now, but she has a presentation on the Hauler Parade. Welcome.
Thank you. And it's Gaffara, G like guppy, Fara like Farrah Fawcett. See, you'll never forget it.
Okay, a memory peg. That's what I needed.
Gaffara. Awesome. Well, thank you for having me tonight, and we are excited, as May is only 15 days from now. But this year, our slogan with the 600 Festival is "Drive Into Summer," as May is certainly the kickoff for summer starting, and it's right around the corner. So we are super excited about the events planned for May this year. Of course, movies on the campus will again kick us off on May the 3rd in downtown Kannapolis in Veterans Park. The movie this year will be Disney's Ralph Breaks the Internet. Ralph Breaks the Internet. It is the number-two sequel of this version of Ralph. The first one was Wreck-It Ralph, and it's about cars racing, so it's definitely with the 600 Festival theme. The next day, as part of Jiggy With the Piggy, will be the Zucchini 600. This event will be on May the 4th, and it's in the kids' area, and these kids can build race cars out of the zucchini vegetable and race them down a track. Registration will be from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30, with races starting at noon. We will have three age groups this year: six and under, seven to 10, and 11 and up. So these kids, the winners of the top three will be on the podium and receive medals as well. So it'll be a fun day, again, for the kids in downtown Kannapolis. And then on Thursday, May 16th, we return to downtown Concord on Union Street for haulers on Union Parade and Fan Fest presented by Freightliner. So from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., downtown Concord will be active with race cars. The haulers will parade right through downtown at about 6:15, and I'm excited to let everyone know that Joey Logano, the reigning NASCAR Cup champion, will be on hand at 6:30 to do a Q&amp;A with Paul Shad from 96.9 Cat Country. He'll be our emcee this year. He'll do a Q&amp;A session and also sign autographs for the first 100 fans, so we're super excited to let everyone know about that as well. The route for the parade will remain the same. They will start at Ride Now Powersports and then make their way through downtown Concord and end up at the Charlotte Motor Speedway. And also excited to share that Too Much Sylvia will be our band. They will perform at 5:00 and 7:00 p.m., so make sure you check it out. So again, we're driving into summer, kicking off May the 3rd. This certainly couldn't happen without the support of Cabarrus County, the Cabarrus County CBB, the City of Concord, and the City of Kannapolis, so we hope you'll all join us on these three events in the great county of Cabarrus. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for being here, and thank you for putting this on. I have attended all three of those events, and it's a lot of fun. If you haven't been before, you should check it out.
Awesome. Thank you. Do you have any questions? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, we move to Item C2, and at this time Karen Calhoun has a recognition.
Good evening, Commissioners. It is certainly my privilege and honor to be here to recognize Mrs. Jane Coffin for 29 years of service with the Department of Human Services. So at this time, I would ask Jane to join me up here with her family. She has her husband Keith with her, her mother Miriam, and her daughter Katie joining us, and any staff that want to come up and join us as well, I would love for you to come up. I know we've got two right here, and Cheryl Harris. Calling everybody out just to come on up. To give you an idea of the timeline of Jane's career with the Department of Human Services, she started back in 1990 as an income maintenance caseworker in doing intake for AFDC, that's Aid to Families with Dependent Children from years ago, back in the day, and Medicaid intake. And then she did that for like a year, and it's interesting to me on the timeline, it says that she was part-time when she started, but she worked 39 hours a week, so I guess back then you could get by with that a little bit and still be considered part-time. She then moved from there to doing some work in what was called the Jobs Program, which is now known as Work First. Back then, that was adopted by President Kennedy. Now, she didn't work way back then, whenever he came up with that legislation, but that was the Jobs Opportunities and Basic Skills Act that is now known as Work First. And she really loved that program. We were talking about that a little bit today. It's a self-sufficiency program that promotes work, and a really fantastic program that's evolved over the years in our department. From there, she moved to a social worker III in foster care. And between the Jobs Program, working as an employment social worker, and foster care, there's about eight years' worth of social work practice going on there. And then she moved to a social work supervisor, and was only that for a year. And for 19 years, she has been the program manager for the Child Welfare Division. And you know, when you look back on a career of 29 years, and you think of having a legacy and leaving a lasting a legacy and leaving an impression on people, I can certainly attest, the short time that I've got to know Jane, I have seen that. Very dedicated individual, in particular to the children that we serve in the department. And I am so proud of this number, and it's not just a number, because I bet you Jane can name every single child. 389 adoptions have taken place over the span of her career, and I know that she had a hand in every one of those during that time. So congratulations, and thank you so much for your service to the Cabarrus County Department of Human Services, and it truly is my honor to give you this, and just thank you so much for your dedication and service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you don't think, when you start in 1990, that this day will come, but it came pretty quick. But I'd like to thank my family first, and I said I wasn't going to do this. Say, let me collect myself. But we don't get to pick when we're going to have to work late, or stay up all night, or be grouchy because we were up all night, but I couldn't have done it without them. When Keith worked, he worked third shift. If I had to work late, all I had to do was call my mom and say, "I need you to keep the kids," and I didn't have to worry. My son's not here, he's still in Raleigh working, but Katie and Ben know what it took to do what we do, but I appreciate that. But I've lived a pretty sheltered life. I've only lived and worked in Cabarrus County, so I haven't gone too far. I live on the same little dirt road, dead-end dirt road, that I've lived on for 51 in my 52 years. I've only had three employers in Cabarrus County, so a lot of times I get two questions: "How do I know you?" and "How do you do what you do with kids and go to sleep at night?" Well, the first question, I say, "Well, you can pick how you know me. I either sold you clothes when I worked at the mall during school. I either arrested you, or I took your kids." So you pick. You pick how you know me. But on the second question, "How do you do what you do and sleep at night?" I've done that because Cabarrus County is good, and we do right by people, and we do a good job. And as long as you can go home at night and know you did all you can do in a day's time, that's all you can ask for. And we do that, and I want you to know that will continue, because it's not, if you think I've done anything good in these years, it's not been me. It's been people like these two. And you've got a lot of those two, and Cheryl and Karen. That'll keep it going. So I appreciate my opportunity to have been here this long, and I know I have raised a ruckus with some folks, but it was all out of the, for the kids and doing what's right for the people of Cabarrus County. And I am especially proud tonight, that Rich, I understand that's your first time back in that seat, and that makes me happy. And I enjoy my time working with you. So I thank you very much, and it has been an honor.
Great. Congratulations, Jane. There are a lot of people that will miss you and your role, and thank you again for what you've done. It's been my pleasure to serve with Jane for the last five or six years on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and I've certainly seen her dedication to children and youth in Cabarrus County, and thank you again. Next, we have from Active Living in Parks, a proclamation for Older Americans Month, and we're happy to have Myra Bumgarner to bring that.
(inaudible). Older Americans still. Thank you, guys. Proclamation for Older America's Month, May 2019. Connect, Create, and Contribute. Whereas Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council recognizes that older adults connect with friends, family, and services that support participation, and whereas Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council is committed to supporting older Americans, older adults engaging in activities that promote learning, health, and personal enrichment. And whereas Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council and older adults will contribute time, talent, and life experiences to benefit others through volunteer, community, and civic service. And whereas Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council is committed to raising awareness about issues facing older Americans and helping all individuals to thrive in communities of their choice for as long as possible. And whereas Cabarrus County Senior Centers can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by promoting and engaging activity, wellness, and social involvement, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living, ensuring community members can benefit from the contributions and experience of older adults. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Older America's Month.
Excellent. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to adopt this proclamation?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And you still have the floor.
Thank you. As you notice, I'm not going anywhere. I just wanted to take this opportunity, if I could, to personally invite all the seniors of, and encourage all the seniors of Cabarrus County. And remember, you are considered a senior when you turn 50. So, right, Lynn, so it's, you're young, but of Cabarrus County, to come participate in Older America's Month. The kickoff will be May 1st at Les Myers Park. Tons of activities going on. So I'd love for you to call, or better yet, come by the senior center and check it out and rec, and just see all the activities. I think you have an outlook in front of you that have all the activities of May and tons of fun. There is something for every interest. And remember what they say: You don't stop having fun when you get old. You get old when you stop having fun.
Excellent.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. There certainly are a lot of activities, and we encourage everybody to participate. Was honored to be able to attend the kickoff for the senior games within the last week or so, and that is quite a lively group and a lot of fun. Thank you. Next, we have from EMS, Emergency Services Week proclamation. We're happy to have Jimmy Lentz to present that.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present this proclamation. Whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those experiencing sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services teams consist of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas Americans benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly-trained individuals, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of the emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week, May 19th through 25th, 2019.
Great. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to adopt the proclamation for Emergency Services Week?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, sir, and thank you for what all of you do every day. We move now to Fair Housing Month proclamation. We're happy to have Kelly Sifford.
I'm going to have to come way down. Thank you. Whereas April is National Fair Housing Month, and April 11th, 2019 marks the 51st anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, and national origin, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all. And whereas Cabarrus County is committed to highlight the Fair Housing Act by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure everyone of their right to fair housing. And whereas Cabarrus County commits to providing equal services without discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, sexual orientation, gender, identity, or, and national origin, and now therefore be it proclaimed that the Cabarrus County Commissioners of Cabarrus County, North Carolina, do hereby resolve that April 2019 being Fair Housing Month begins a year-long commemoration of the Fair Housing Act in Cabarrus County, and urge all citizens to wholeheartedly recognize this celebration throughout the year to be adopted April 15th, 2019, April 2019.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to adopt this proclamation?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And next, we have Soil and Water Stewardship Week proclamation, and Kelly's going to do that one as well.
Thank you. The subject this year is "Life in the Soil," and it's "Dig Deeper." Whereas fertile soil and clean water provide us with daily sustenance, and whereas effective conservation practices have helped us to provide a rich standard of living, and whereas our security depends upon healthy soil and clean water, and whereas stewardship calls for each person to conserve these precious resources, therefore, we do hereby proclaim April 28th to May 5th, 2019, Soil and Water Stewardship Week.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion to adopt this proclamation?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to a proclamation for National County Government Month, April 2019. And I will read that one. "National County Government Month, April 2019. Connecting the Unconnected. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties, serving more than 300 million Americans, provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities, and whereas counties provide health services, administer justice, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities, and much more, and whereas Cabarrus County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways, and whereas the National Association of Counties President Greg Cox's Connecting the Unconnected Initiative, NACO, is demonstrating how counties deliver people-centered services to our residents nationwide, and whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners for Cabarrus County, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as National County Government Month, and encourage all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities." Do I hear a motion to adopt this proclamation?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes. We move now to informal public comments. I only have one yellow card here, which is for a public hearing to be held later in the meeting. Is there anybody else that has a matter they'd like to bring before the board? If not, we will move to our Consent Agenda, and Consent Agenda is before you as well. These are all items that have been previously discussed at our work session two weeks ago. Do I hear a motion that we adopt the Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to new business. First item is a public hearing to be held on behalf of ACE Academy regarding the issuance of charter school revenue bonds. This is a requirement that they come to the, well, I've had several people to ask about this, but this does not involve Cabarrus County. We're just holding this public hearing on their behalf. And I will get it here momentarily. At any rate, we do have representatives from ACE Academy here in the event that anyone has questions. So at this time, I will open the public hearing and invite anybody to the podium that would like to speak in regards to this bond issuance. And I finally did get what I was looking for here. This is to fulfill the requirements of Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code. Seeing no one to speak, I will close the public hearing, and I think that requirement has now been fulfilled. So we, yes, sir?
Motion to approve.
To approve, okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
The resolution authorizing.
The resolution authorizing the bonds.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just to reiterate, this does not have anything to do with county funding.
Correct. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to G2, and this is an agreement with Rocky River Road Associates, and it does require a public hearing. Manager Jonathan Marshall will talk with us prior to that.
As you said, this is an agreement with Rocky River Associates. This and a similar agreement with the town of Harrisburg, if approved, would obligate the county to participate in a synthetic tax increment financing district that would allow the payback of a public road constructed by a private developer. That public road has been on our long-range transportation plan for some time, and really, truly, without agreements like this, it would be difficult to see that road ever being built. So this is a way that it can be built privately, and then the county and town of Harrisburg would participate with, through revenues received by growth in a very specific area surrounding that road, and really produced because that road has been built, would then participate in paying back the cost of that construction. Although we are asking you to hold the public hearing tonight, we have had communication from our bond counsel, Mr. Cook may want to elaborate on this, but our bond counsel has asked, will he, will he explore some questions with the local government commission, that you hold the public hearing but postpone any decision on this agreement?
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Marshall? Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on this project, and I do have a card from Mr. Jim Merrifield.
Thank you for having this public hearing and hearing us. I'm Jim Merrifield with MPV Properties and also Rocky River Road Associates. I'm here requesting an infrastructure reimbursement agreement with the county for Farmington Ridge Parkway. This is a longstanding road project in the Thoroughfare Plan. Here, I'm going to try to use my, there it is. And so this is a sheet from the Thoroughfare Plan. And so this is a sheet from the thoroughfare plan of the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and the top sheet shows a portion of Harrisburg, and I've zoomed in on the, a portion of it there, and you can see what's labeled as Plaza Road Extension, which comes off of Rocky River Road, where Plaza Road comes into there next to the Harris Teeter, runs up north, and connects with Tom Query Line right at the county line. And so this project's been on the, on the transportation and thoroughfare plans for close to 20 years since the Outer Belt was first conceived, and as a way to provide a connection between Rocky River Road and Tom Query Road, to provide access to the interchange and from it, and to open up the area here. And a small portion of the road was built about 20 years ago when a Farmington Ridge neighborhood was built off of Tom Query, and that portion is what's now giving the road the name Farmington Ridge Parkway at the request of Harrisburg. The remainder of the project, of course, has never been built and, and just keeps rolling over on the thoroughfare plan. We're requesting the county, along with Harrisburg, to reimburse us for the cost of the Parkway. We're prepared to fully fund the construction of the road, as well as to donate the right-of-way, including the Food Creek Crossing, at a cost of $6 million. We would then get reimbursed by the county and the town from the net new or incremental tax proceeds that are generated just from the property right at the road and at the interchange, including our property and some two small commercial properties fronting on Rocky River Road. And for the county, the reimbursement would be at a, a rate of 68% of the net new taxes that are generated from this property, which would provide for the reimbursement of the school expenses generated by part of the development. We would be building the, the Parkway as part of the development of Farmington. Farmington is a project that's long been on the Harrisburg plans for, as a mixed-use center. This is up on the board, is from the Harrisburg Land Use Plan, and the ABCD are the four mixed-use centers they have in their plans, and we would be Item C, which is this Rocky River Road mixed-use area. And again, here's a little blow-up that shows C, and again, that's at Rocky River Road right off the interchange at the county line. And you can see coming up out of the C to the north is that same Farmington Ridge Parkway. So our, our plan, I'm going to go back, so our plan is consistent with the town's plan for a pedestrian-friendly, walkable, bicycle, bikeable village center, and it would be built in accordance with that, and it would include movie theater, shops, restaurants, fitness center, medical and professional offices. So I've also included some materials I covered at our meeting a couple of weeks ago, so I'll just skim through these, but to make the point that our firm has the experience and the resources to conduct this project and to bring it to a successful completion, and these are some of the larger mixed-use land developments we've done with interchanges, North Cross and Whitehall, and then some mixed-use retail and village center plans at Burke Dale Village, Stonecrest at Piper Glen, Jethon Village in Cornelius, and then recently, we completed Redstone down in Lancaster County, just below Ballantyne, with a theater and restaurants and shops. So here, and then these are some of the medical office buildings we've built recently. So this is our master plan that shows the project, so what's brightly colored in green and drawn in is the master plan. You can see the yellow line going to the north is Farmington Ridge Parkway, and where it hits Tom Query is it's going through the existing Farmington Ridge neighborhood that is provided for that Parkway section through there. And then this is a blow-up of the village center, which shows the mixed-use nature of the development, the, a movie theater anchoring the main street with shops and restaurants on both sides, as well as other retail, and the blue being offices, medical and professional offices that would also be in there. So in summary, I guess the, would want to make the points that Farmington Ridge Road is an important public thoroughfare that would not otherwise be funded or built. We would provide all the upfront funding and right-of-way for the project. The county would have no risks if there are cost overruns or the new development doesn't generate enough taxes to repay us. The county funds come only from new taxes, it would otherwise not exist. The school costs are covered by the 68% reimbursement rate. Farmington will be an important mixed-use regional facility in accordance with Harrisburg's master plan, and MPV has the experience and the resources to execute on the project. And finally, except for the county's participation in the infrastructure reimbursement agreement, we wouldn't be able to build this project. So, you know, but for the county's participation in this agreement, we would not be able to move forward with this. So those are my comments.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else to speak on this matter during the public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and as was mentioned earlier, we will defer a decision on this until a later meeting, when bond counsel has worked out details. So we will move now to Item G3, offer to purchase property off of Bradford Road. Jonathan Marshall will fill us in on that.
As I stated at your work session, this was an offer from the Loveland family to purchase four acres at the end of, a little over four acres at the end of Bradford Road, and we did, you had conditionally accepted that. We'd taken in the deposit, advertised it for upset bid, and did not receive any additional upset bids. So at this point, it's before you to consider for final approval. If you do so, Mr. Loveland is prepared to have that surveyed, and then we'll work with Mr. Cook on the deed for the property.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Marshall? All right, thank you. Do I hear a motion to accept the purchase offer from Benjamin and Jennifer Loveland for approximately 4.35 acres of property located on Bradford Road, and to authorize the county manager to sign all required documents subject to review and revision by the county attorney?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. And that motion passes. We move now to reports for informational purposes, and at this time, I'll receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards or committees. It looked like Commissioner Honeycutt is queued up with some reports.
Okay, I wanted to start with one from the Active Living in Park Center. They have several activities going on they wanted us to make you aware of. The Senior Game Follies will take place tomorrow, Tuesday, at Winkler Middle School, beginning at 6:30. There are 20 acts, all of which will prove to be exciting and entertaining. It's a $5 charge to get in. Spring Fling Wednesday is April 17th at Concord Center, Senior Center, beginning at 11:00, with games and cakewalk, and that's free. A light rail trip to Charlotte, April 30th. A luncheon learn every Wednesday, where the sta, let the staff know by Friday if you're going to attend, so that's a $6 luncheon. Midnight Run will be the band for April 26 Dance at the Concord Senior Center, and Gem Con is the band for Saturday, April 27th. And the Silver Art Showcase is going on until April 25th. And if you have any questions about any of the events, you can call 704-920-3484. And then I'll just give you, if it's okay, a few reports. A couple of meetings that I've been to since the last meeting, one was on human trafficking, and, and not to spend a lot of time on that, but just to educate you just a little bit. In the Charlotte region in 2018, there were 49 cases of human trafficking under the age of 18. 13 were in Cabarrus County. Four were abused situations, five were exploited, and four were trafficked. And the average age of those were 14. So all of us are out and about, and I want to give you a phone number that if you are ever out and you see a situation that you feel like needs to be reported, it's a number that you can call at any time that will take you to someone who will do follow-up on that, and it's 888-373-7888. 888-373-7888. So I would just invite you to stay aware of that. And then Chairman Morris and Commissioner Schu and I all attended the first census meeting for our community, just to kind of, it was organizational kind of meeting, and that will be happening again, like I say, in 2020. So when you get those things in the mail or those reports, don't ignore them. Those are very important to us from the perspective of how different grants and opportunities are afforded for our county, and, but that'll be a while, but just a little preview there. And then the last thing is, I attended, I think it was Friday a week ago, a meeting up at the research campus on opportunity zones. And just to kind of give you a quick definition of what that is, it's where investors may reinvest capital gains from existing investments and defer tax gains for that, and there are different, I think, well, there's probably five or six opportunity zones in our area. So it's a great opportunity for people who are looking to get some tax advantage, and then it also helps the community in which it's in. So I see Robbie shaking his head, I know he was there, but I brought each of you a copy of the PowerPoint from that so that you would have it. And that is it for me.
Great, thank you. Okay, are there other reports? Okay, I will mention that the county is involved in conducting community input workshops as we create our new strategic plan. I attended one of those last week that was held at the Kannapolis Library, as, as well as Commissioner Honeycutt. It's an excellent opportunity to, for folks to express their opinions, tell us about the issues that are important to them, the things that they think that we're needed to be focusing on, and, and it's very, very well put together and moderated. I think, I think folks will enjoy that experience. But we have several of those coming up. I think there's about a dozen of them total. The next one will be April 17th at 6:30 PM at the Concord Library. There will be another on April 25th at 6:30 at the Mount Pleasant Town Hall. One on April 29th at 6:30 at the Harrisburg Library. One on April 30th at 6:00 PM at the Midland Town Hall. On May 2nd at 6:30 at West Cabarrus YMCA. May 13th at 6:30 at the Logan Community Center. So as, as you can tell, we're trying to, to make those as geographically convenient for people all over the county, and if you didn't catch any of those dates and times as I was calling them out, they are also available on our Cabarrus County website. So I would encourage you to, to take a look at those, and that input is extremely valuable to the work that the commissioners, as well as the staff, does throughout the year and looking forward into future years. So that input would really be appreciated. And so now we move to general comments by board members. Does anyone have anything else they would like to share? Okay, we do have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation, economic development, and acquisition of real property as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A34 and 5.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We are now in closed session. Thank you.